Aye. Aye. Post or abstaining, motion carries. I have to say that, stand for the thing of the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
At this moment, I'm going to ask that we observe a moment of silence to honor the passing of Chief Leo Henry of the Tuscoro Nation. Thank you. We have no one signed up for the privilege of the floor, so I'd like to call for motion to accept the consensus agenda items as submitted. Anything to separate or discuss? All those in favor of accepting consensus agenda, please say aye. Aye. Post or abstaining, motion carries. And the call for motion to accept the personnel report as submitted. It's been moved and seconded. I'd like to hold items F3, F6, and F7. Is there anything else to discuss or hold? Okay, we'll also add F8 then to the hold list. Alright, then I call for a vote for F1, 2, F4, 5, and F9 through 35. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Post or abstaining, motion carries. Mr. Stack, I'm gonna turn you over for those four, please.
On personnel item F3, I'd like to introduce to the board a candidate for a position here at our West Street Elementary School, and that is Anne Kerr. Anne is right here, and Anne will be joining us from the Orchard Park Central School District where she's worked in a few different capacities for us. She is coming back very close to home, to Niagara We Field. She's very excited about the opportunity to help our school district, and she comes with a myriad of different training and skill sets that I think are going to be remarkable for the growth of West Street. So Anne, welcome to you, welcome to the district. Thank you. On on F7, I'd like to welcome Mr. Sean Hughes, who will be serving as a building-based substitute this year at Niagara We Field High School. Mr. Hughes has helped our CPA program immensely, has worked as a district-level sub over the last few years for us, and is always kind of willing to step up to the plate from what I hear from our high school administration, namely. And Sean is very dependable, and I see him as being a great fit to help us on a daily basis at our high school. So, welcome Sean.
Hi, everybody. Recently joined the We Field post. I'll be a little bit more active in the community as well.
That's great, Sean. Thank you. Also, in F7, we have Nicole Seagan joining us this evening. Nicole, we are lucky to acquire Nicole as a building-based substitute for us, namely at Colonial Village this coming school year. Nicole served as a long-term substitute over at Blue St. Porter, as well as a substitute at Blue St. Porter over the last few years, and has also worked in our district in the past, but she's looking to help us on a more regular basis and be really solid backup for us. She's got really strong skill set as well, coming with some varied experiences that we think can help us. So we're really looking forward to Nicole joining our team over at Colonial Village. Thank you. Number eight, our pleasure to welcome Rose Neville. And Rose, we're very excited to have Rose back. She is a graduate. Are you a graduate? You're not a graduate, okay. Alright, close. But yes, there has been some of those. But she's also a daughter of an employee of ours, and I will say that we're very excited to have Rose coming to us, and she is leaving a position from a neighboring district to come to us, and we're excited that she's going to be joining ETMS to become our ELA AIS teacher. And the function of that position at the Board recalls is really to provide some recovery on some learning maybe lost due to the pandemic, and also aid and assist teachers in their foundational instruction during the regular school year with the students that may need it. So those students that are falling behind are those students that need remedial work of some sort at the middle school. So we want to welcome Rose, and thank you so much for joining us.
There's hold, we'll be voting on that also. So I'd like to then call for a vote for F3, F6, F7, and F8. All those in favor of accepting those four items, please say aye. Aye. Post or abstaining, motion carries. Congratulations and welcome to the Felker family. Moving on down to standing committees, Capitol Project Committee.
Okay, so Capitol Projects is pretty much on track for all our projects we've done this summer. We have one left. It's Colonial Village. That's probably going to go through October, I believe. What we've done is we've set up a meeting on October 18th, Capitol Projects meeting, we have 4:00 PM. We're going to review what the projects that we have coming forward, and possibly the future ones.
Talking about the next one. No, if you want to talk about
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Also, Colonial Village, we received a letter from the Department of Transportation, and they'll, based on their findings, they will establish a 30 mile per hour speed limit along Route 31 for the Colonial Village School. So that's a good thing in that area because it's, there's a bend in the road, and they definitely needed that. So good notice that we got.
Yeah.
Alright, any questions about Capitol Project and, or Bob? Alright. Just for, do you have an upcoming meeting scheduled for policy?
We do not have anything currently.
Nope, we do need to set one because we did get some policies in, so that's what we need to do.
We have fundraiser as an informational item there, obstacle fundraising groups there, so you just want to check those out. It's official, students report. You are on the docket. Nothing? Very good. Alright, presence report. As you heard us talking before, just you guys with the side with the whole moving, going to NISBA, the modus of transportation to go there, you know, Allison and Dan driving us together, you know, be entertaining. I know. Well, who, so are you the only one not going to law, pre-law?
I'm gonna go as soon as I get there.
Okay. Alright, so you're, we're attending, the rest of us are
If you want, yeah, if you want to send something to me about how you prefer to travel, and then we can figure it out.
Well, either way, I mean, we have to go down Saturday. So it's either we're leaving it really early in the morning to, for you to drive us.
So, but if you, you just tell me how you want to do it.
Yeah. Alright, well, we'll have a chit chat then about that piece. Um, obviously, with the start of the school year, campus is looking great. Buildings and Grounds has done a great job in getting things ready, especially after the Capitol Project. I know the, it is very nice to drive in the parking lot now and not, you know, have to lose our cars and some of those, those vehicles that as you pull in. Fall sports have started. It's great that we are, you know, have fans live at them. Please feel free to attend so that we can, you know, the athletes, after losing an entire season of large groups of fans in the stands, it'll be nice for them to come out, you know, have people come out and see their games and play in front of that, that crowd. And that's all I have, except that we will do for old business, the vote for NISBA, the NISBA representative. Alright. Superintendent, your his report.
Thank you. First, I want to say that as a district, we're really excited to start the 2021-22 school year. We can't wait to have all of our students back. Last year, we had about eighty percent of our students here in person, so we're really excited that we're going to have all of our students back this school year. Second, on August 31st, so yesterday, we held our second conference with two other school districts. One was Lafayette, and the other Salmon River, to discuss the inequitable funding for Native American schools that are built, that schools that are built on native lands. There's only three districts in New York State that fall into that category. We're one of them. And our real push is with New York State to say the funding isn't fair, it's not equitable. It's not close to being equitable. Let me just give you an example with our own district. Since I've been in this district, now we've had approximately $55 million worth of Capitol project, project work either done or scheduled, counting the work that's going on now that'll finish next summer. Okay, $55 million. During that exact same time, New York State has spent less than $200,000 on Tuscoro Elementary School. Fifty-five million, less than 200,000. No one would try to make the argument that it's equitable. So here's what we're asking for. We're asking for the executive branch, okay, the new governor, the Division of Budget, to include a budget line for the three districts that will allow us initially $20 million to catch up all the work that needs to be done at those schools. At our school first, $20 million for ours, $20 million for the other two schools. The, literally, the bricks are falling down. We showed them all of the pictures, okay? We need that work done. Then, we've asked, like we are able to do with all of our other schools, when we put together a package of work that needs to be done, based on building condition surveys and annual visual inspections, that they do the work. Okay, so for those that don't understand or don't know, that school is on native lands, but the school is actually the property of the state. It's our job as a district to provide education to the students who go to that school. But the funding is to come from New York State. And currently, about 14 to 17 buildings, now I've heard different numbers, all share about a $3 million pot of money each year. There's just not enough money to go around. And instead, things get so dilapidated before something can get fixed. So you'll continually hear me talking about this. I hope that by, and I will say this, our legislate, we held a conference in the summer. Our legislators, local legislators, were on the call or somebody was present. Yesterday, the legislators from the Anandaga Nation area were there on the call or in person. So that's really great to see. We will now do a similar thing with, for the Salmon River School District. We're hoping to get a seat at the legislative finance table, so that the three of us can go in and show the significant equities that are, that are present when it comes to funding.
Do you have, do you have a list of things that need to be done?
Great, 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 great question. If you'd like, I can certainly come here and show, because we did that during the presentation. I'd love to, if you'd like me to. In our district alone, just from the building condition survey that was done in 2015, there's about $10 million worth of work. And that, though, remember, building condition surveys, they only hit on the things that are absolutely necessary. It's brick and mortar sort of stuff. It's unit events, you know, it's that sort of thing. So that's not talking about technology upgrades or those things that we've been able to do in other buildings that we haven't been able to do that. So it's significant, yeah, I'd love to. So if the group's comfortable with me doing that, I'd love to do that, you know, bring that to the next meeting. I promise I won't do too much. But that's important. You mentioned the Capitol Project meeting on October 18th. In a minute, Mr. Stack and I'll quickly go through a reopening plan that's also going to be recorded, it's been recorded. It'll be sent out tomorrow morning. Okay, we're going to talk a little about that reopening plan. One thing that's at the end, that's in this reopening plan, but I just, we can't reiterate enough. Meals for the entire school year, the 21-22 school year are free, breakfast and lunch for everybody. So families should know coming into the school year, that's something that they can certainly take advantage of and utilize. Okay? Mr. Stack, could you grab the clicker there? Or never mind. Mr. Grant, you could, you could forward if you want. That would be great. Okay. Here's, here's the good news. Last year, our district worked through pandemic, I think extremely well. Really worked very well. And start this school year, and I know that a month ago, certainly was not what I was expecting, okay? About a month ago, we thought we might be coming back to school a little differently. Numbers are up in the state. I can just tell you, one of the things that I look at all the time is this COVID tracker, and the when you look at it, you can look at the whole map of New York State, and the map of New York State about a month ago, there were a couple counties, few counties that were red, there was a few orange, there were yellows, okay? Now, when you go to it, almost every single county is red, including ours. So two days ago, Niagara County went red. And that, that number is based on, we'll talk about it in a minute, but having more than 100 cases per 100,000 people, okay? Positive, seven-day rolling average, okay? Um, you know, as an overview, and I promised I won't read all this to you. What, when? Okay, in other words, if we drop two orange, what do we do different? If we drop the yellow, what do we do different? I New York City was actually breaking down.
Mr. Grant, do you know, when they come up with those numbers, is that based on, like, what determines, like, who gets tested?
It's the positive cases.
Aggregate of anyone, anywhere.
All I know is that's, right, it's the positive cases that are reported to counties that are going to work.
I'm just curious, I know the intention to do weekly testing with our staff, like if that's done on best.
To outtest in place, we're going to try to make this easy for people if they have, you know, symptoms. It's possible. We're actually working with the county. All the districts where I, the county school districts are working to put together a traveling testing center for people. It also would be a school that almost has a break after something. I think your question just might be more to, are there, is it going to be forced, like, random testing, that sort of thing, possibly?
Yeah, so if you're testing a lot more, I mean, say someone gets it, very low symptoms, let's get tested.
Sure.
Now you're testing all these, you know, on mass, school system, forever.
I got you.
We're just going to be there the whole time.
It could, it could throw it off. Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't, I think, I think the difference would be as if it's random. Right? I mean, you might argue, and I'm just spitballing with you, right, really quick, but if, if you are in a situation where you're only testing people who have symptoms, you're actually percent positivity is going to be up, as opposed to if you throw people in for the random, it would actually, I think, drop it down, I think, if you did random testing. Think, that makes sense to you?
The state is saying it's mandated, is it?
That's correct, as of right now, mask mandate.
So if we, we drop there, it stays still, so it's mandated, is that what it is?
Correct. As of right now, that's correct. Because it wasn't anything based on color, but very recently, like this week, Governor Hopeless has made some comments about if community rates decrease. So again, I don't
Change, I did, I understand.
So I, we'll be flexible with that.
We just, we just don't know where that flexibility is.
Yeah, we don't know what that line of demarcation is. Yeah. Okay, good, good question. Anything else on this? Okay. So masks indoors, okay, are the rule. We're doing what we did last year, so just so everybody knows. Just I ran what we did last year again by our county health director, and he said that he felt like it was an acceptable way to do it again. It's something that we were used to. In other words, we can have very standardized breaks for all of our students. So that worked last year, we're going to do it again. The nine-minute piece is important because, of course, the longer that people are without masks, the more inclined it would be to spread. But also, if, if you're without a mask for more than 10 minutes or more, and someone around you is positive, there's more likely an opportunity that you will be quarantined. So it's the reason why we use that, that amount of time. Okay?
And I'm not arguing that numbers, we first check nine minutes for 45, nine minutes for 45 days.
Yep. So in other words, a class period.
Yeah. Would it, would it be better, and I'm just asking, I don't know.
Sure.
If you went four minutes and every 20 minutes, would it be better for the student?
I think, you know, you know what I think it comes down to, being able to manage it too. Right? You know, I think it's already, you're going to try to, this group, and now this group, and this group, and this group. If you had to do that twice as many times, I think for a teacher to work through that, I get it, but I think that makes it difficult. Good question. Well, I'm sorry, one thing down at the bottom, just so people understand, masks are recommended, but not required outdoors. Okay, yes. We're going to get there. Good question. Yep. Uh, so when it comes to physical distancing, really important to understand, we are, and there's a word that's really important that's in all of the guidance, and that is when practicable. Okay, three foot is the rule. Whatever we can, we're going to be further apart than that. We're going to create as much social distancing as we can. Okay, and you'll see why in a minute later, because of actually one of the questions that was just asked, okay, about music. So the larger the space for social distancing, the better. And again, a lot of that has to do with the concern about quarantining as well. Alright. So when, if you look at that third bullet, all social distancing will be done to the greatest extent practicable. What they were very clear about this year in the guidance is that social distancing should not preclude us from doing the work that we need to do with kids every day. So in other words, if, if social distancing would mean that we couldn't run a class, or we couldn't come to school, because you had to have social distancing of so many feet in our cafeteria, you don't do that. So it's when practicable. Uh, let's see. Physical distancing is not required on school buses. The idea is when you're on that school bus, though, everybody's wearing masks. I know I stole your thunder for a minute.
That's okay, great.
Next. The protocols for the academic classroom will also be utilized for all these other places. Again, when it comes to social distancing, we will do the best that we can. So in all of these places, phys ed, music, athletics, if we can do six feet, great, when practicable. But if you can't, it's okay. Now, there's a caveat to that, and we'll get to that in a minute, but it's when practicable. What, what I think is a little bit cleaner this year is that the expectations are more clear across the board. So there's not, if you're here, this is what it is, and if you're here, this is what it is.
What do we say with buses? Have we gone with road cable buses?
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, because we don't have to restrict the number of people on that bus. That's exactly right. Correct.
Which is, which is a huge difference from last year, obviously.
Yes. Next. I mentioned this a little bit earlier, but our district is working with, really, it's the, it's our bosses, but it's the Niagara County Superintendent's to come up with a place, a way to have a testing lab that can move from district to district if we need it this year. Okay? As of right now, there are testing sites. Those are available on the Niagara County Department of Health website. Mr. Stack has those testing sites. If people are looking, need it, we'll certainly be sending that off during the course of the year. Okay? Of course, if we do have those sites, if they do, we do a pop-up here at any point for testing. Parental legal guardian, of course, will have to give consent. Okay?
On the temperature and questionnaire screenings, a couple of quick notes there. A few weeks back, NICE had put out a guidance document that stated that temperature screenings at the door for our students, as well as the weekly questionnaires that we were doing last year on Sunday evenings, and will do again this year on Sunday evenings, were no longer necessary to do. We took the position very early on. We took the position very early on, that we felt that those were two mitigation strategies we wanted to keep in place, nonetheless, so we're gonna continue with those screenings, certainly, we have the scanning software that the board's aware of, that we purchased last year prior to the start of the school year, so we'll be again, doing daily temperature screens in the building, and also on Sunday evening, sending out the periodic questionnaire on screen. Obviously, we don't want people here that are sick, so those individuals should be staying home and should go get tested. Again, we want our parent cooperation at home, we want them to be able to help us identify symptoms that come along, such as the ones listed below, just as we did last year. Good hand washing and respiratory etiquette, we certainly want to coach the respiratory etiquette, when there is a cough or chase, certainly, even though students are masked, particles tend to get through, we understand that, we want to be able to, obviously reinforce with our students, that they, they should take every effort possible to avoid, you know, sneezing into their hands, try to sneeze into the center of their elbow, and, and cover up a little bit more that way, but also, we, we made another point this year at the start of the school year, to train our staff on etiquette, as far as appropriate means of adequately washing your hands for twenty seconds, frequently throughout the day, hand sanitation stations across our buildings will again be visible, and certainly be available for everybody to use, but we're gonna, again, encourage routine hand washing. Contact tracing and quarantine, we will follow the same sort of procedures that we did last year with contact tracing, I will kind of be the point person for the buildings, when there is notification that comes in, we will work as a verification point, maybe with parents, and then obviously move up the chain of command to our three Niagara County Tracers that we typically work with, they then alert the system at the state level, which then triggers the discussions between the state quarantine officers, and those that will be quarantined, or those individuals that are infected. From there, we will always notify on a daily basis, as we did last year, those infectious cases. We also want to reiterate what quarantine will look like, the board may recall last year in several instances, very early on, we were in tough positions where we had to quarantine entire classrooms. This year, we may be in a little bit of a better position with that, given the fact that we will be quarantining on only those individuals that share six feet of proximity contact distance with an infected individual, and only those that are within six feet for the ten cumulative minutes across a twenty-four hour period, so again, that's where we come into play with the tracing, that's where seating charts come in very handy, so that we know where our students are seated, so that we can come back to those seating charts and adequately identify who a potential quarantine may be. Again, on transportation, the superintendent alluded to it just a bit, but masks will be the rule on our bus fleet, and the difference here is that there's no longer, no longer the spacing guideline. That is what created some of the complexities we had last year, certainly, but siblings must sit together, that's in the guidance, and obviously, they want us to monitor our loading procedures, and also, obviously, with weather dependence, obviously, beginning of the year, to, to increase ventilation as much, as much as we can on our buses, by cracking windows and patch vents as well, just to promote air circulation, appropriate air circulation. The five-day in-school meal plan, this is kind of a layout for each of our buildings, at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, of what a in-school meal plan will look like. Again, we want to tell our families first and foremost, that there's gonna be free breakfast and lunch, it's gonna be available for all students throughout the school year, just as it has been for the stretch of the pandemic, but in our elementary schools, lunch will be consumed in the cafeteria or alternate location, to ensure that there's three-foot distancing between students, breakfast will be available daily, but will be consumed in the classroom. Everett Town Middle School and High School, students will go to the cafeteria through the line for lunch, and if three feet distancing cannot be maintained in the cafeteria, again, you will identify an alternate location for those students to safely have their lunch and consume it. The main difference will be the breakfast, at the middle school being available daily, but that will be delivered to classrooms for consumption, whereas at the high school, they will go to the cafeteria and will heat it in the cafeteria upon arrival, and that way, we feel pretty confident we can have social distance maintained. On the instructional plan, superintendent already said, and certainly the commissioner has this, we, we want kids in school, we want them here five days a week, we wanted that last year as well, and did so very effectively, to break the majority of our students, for any of those students that wanted to become a full person, or in person full-time, I should say, they were into, but that is our goal, and that is our intent for this school year. We are not offering a remote learning option, certainly though, we, we did place out a request for any of those individuals that were immunocompromised or had significant health conditions, to alert us by August tenth, so that we could provide education through a neighboring BOCs, which would be able to provide some, some level of a remote learning option for those that are immunocompromised or have health condition. Compliments to not only everybody here, but as well as Grant Phillips, who worked so hard to increase the ventilation in our buildings, and that was a big lift, because we had a new code requirement, and in order to do that, we had to get to a point where our systems could handle the effective flow of air, and cleaning of air, to increase our air quality, and again, this is kind of an outline of some of the steps we have taken to recirculate air in and throughout the building, as well as kind of some guidelines as to how we run and maximize air flow in our boat, for how long, and for how long after the building is occupied, and so on and so forth. But obviously, you know, we wanna, we wanna keep this safe for our staff and our students, this was certainly a challenge, getting things up to date, so kudos to a pregnant staff, and, and, or for supporting those initiatives and to keep things safe. Lastly, just, there's been some questions on fans, you know, certainly, get our fans available, and can we use them? Or yes, but it has to be a one directional flow out of the window, directly near the window, to blow that air out.
And if I could just add one quick thing, the, the companies that we use, those contractors for systems controls, are who we worked with last year to make sure that we were able to meet all of the expectations of ventilation, and we, we do that throughout the year, so we, when we were able to do it last year, so we're, we're set for going into this school year, which is great.
Cleaning and disinfecting protocols, we will be doing a lot of what we did last year, where, you know, we clean spaces as soon as possible, if someone does test positive, that we know was in the building on a particular day, and certainly, we'll clear the space in order to do so, it's generally a repeat of what we did last year. I'd like to point out that the cleaning of the school buildings and buses will happen each once a day, but I'm proud to say that, you know, it's happening more frequently than that. Our buses are cleaned often more than once a day, we know that to be true, so some of the sanitization machinery that we bought last year certainly is helpful to that, but, you know, we are planning to do the exact same with our cleaning staff and disinfecting procedures this year that we did last.
Okay, here's a brief summary, I know there's a lot on there, we're not gonna read all this to you, it's, it's what we just talked about, but we put this on there because we make sure that this is the last slide on the presentation, for anybody who wants to look and, and kind of get a quick summary. One thing that we want to reinforce, and this is true during COVID or not, if children are sick during the school year, please keep them home, okay? If, if child's running a fever, please keep them home, we'll, we'll have the extra mitigation strategy in place with the temperature scanner, but you know, we ask people if they're, if they're sick to, to stay home, okay? The one thing I know is this, this, this school community will handle this incredibly well, it's, there's a lot of uncertainty, well, it'll be up and down, I'm sure, during the course of the year, but we'll, we'll get through it together. Questions, yes?
On behalf of athletics, are we gonna continue the questionnaire for, is that heard?
Just the weekly, correct?
It's just the weekly.
It's just the weekly.
Good question.
Good question, yeah. Yeah, good, else?
Just real quick, I heard some frustrations over initially, it looks a bit different than we anticipated. Local effort between you, our county, having the governor kind of stop on that with her own kind of contest, heavy-handed mandates. Which I completely disagree with, I, I say that both the roles are always best, as you can tell it, I believe, and I've been looking at colors with her. And I don't know if the rest of the board, if we can put out any communication, I know you want to communicate with her, if you can fund it for justice, but advocate for local decision-making, so if that's something we're interested in pressing.
That's not really our area to bother you, that's, that's, that's what we have proposed before. If you put it, ask this, we put on our legislative agenda to do that, or the legend for the helping this, but meeting that.
You don't think has the local school district, they have any say or expression? You know, again, your, it's getting into board members, you can express any.
Based on the author office.
Not appropriate to companies, say against a mandate that shut down local decisions?
Anyone want to make a motion to do that, or go through that, I mean, that's.
I would make a motion to, to air that grievance to the governor, and to advocate for local decision-making, I would make that motion.
You're asking to send a letter, well, I didn't even know. Go ahead, some issues in another district last year. This has become a political issue, and state, you know, everyone's split on it, I don't know, nobody knows what's true, what's not true, and you know, I kind of like what we're gonna do, halls, buses, leave rooms safe, but unmasked, at least she won't talk, Eric's call, but she made manual, so there's nothing we can do, I mean. I mean, is that what, been done there?
Well, here, here's, I guess, two, two things. So, if you, if the, we're asking for what my recommendation would be on, on something like local control. There's a lot of things I'd want local control on, I don't think any, I don't know, but I don't know that any board members, and I know myself, I don't have a doctorate that connects to health, and so, when it comes to health, I, I don't really feel like it's, should be me making that decision, I think, you know, we, we have a department of health who personally, I think, should be making the decision, and, and that's where this came from, it came from the department of health, so I would be very leery about making a decision about public health, it's not what I went into, I don't have a license for it, so that would be, you know, as far as a recommendation for me, so, you know, obviously, a, a board can act independent of that, but I, as a board, but I, I wouldn't make a recommendation to go against the, the state health department, or the county health department for that matter.
Like I said, it's more of what's alluded to, I mean, you're making plans effectively with county health department, right, before this man, this year. Much frustration of many, many people. And just to let the governor know our displeasure with that, that I think better board, more decision-making.
But as you say, that there's these people reaching out to you that have displeasure for that, I'm gonna tell you that I run into an equal amount that are thankful the governor made that decision, and that this is what the decision was.
Regardless of whether you choose if policies of masking or not masking, to make that at a local level, so maybe if we all were, the decision locally would be to mask. That's, that's what I'm, you know, contending here, that best decisions are made locally, we were trying to go, and that was stumped by the governor's mandate, without consideration for, you know, variations across the state, so I would contend to make that voice, you know, to contend for that.
And again, the lobbying arm of a board, as we take an oath of office to uphold the decisions of the governor and the state education department, that it's, that, that would be to direct the NISBA to use the legend, to.
I understand, I see this, but I'm not advocating. Lawlessness, I mean, have you ever had a super, superior supervisor, you know, say something, you say, actually, this might not be the best idea, maybe a better decision can be made. I mean, that's, that's America, you bring your ideas to the table, right, they could be shut down, whatever, but there's something to be had, rather than heavy-handed, top-down, with disregard for local policy.
So don't you hold a public position in your town, can you take your concerns and do it through that route, I agree, I don't think this is the avenue for that, but you holding a position as like a local.
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying various groups can advocate, like, to make their voices heard, I would say, maybe it's advantageous as a local district, school board, I mean, if we are on the same page, maybe we're not on the same page, that, that the decisions we brought to that local.
Well, in those decisions, I agree with Dan, in that, in, in the way he put it, where it is exactly how, the, the support that I have of decisions for that should not be local, it should be.
I guess, I mean, that's, your opinion, I don't know the pleasure of the rest of the board if they agree with that, or?
Ask them, they're right here.
I don't, I don't know how that reflects on the board, if we go against a department of health regulations. I don't know how that reflects upon us as a board, to go against the department of health recommendations, say to Dan Sableton, we're gonna do our own thing, no, because it's.
That's, that's not what I'm saying, I think I'm misinterpreting, I'm just saying to bring it back local, not disregarding whatever, but just making it know that local city will be better, that's what we're attempting to do, that was squashed with the mandate. And whether we decide locally, mask, not mask, just like what that looks like, we were headed in one direction, that was squashed. Numbers, but it wasn't taken into consideration without.
Well, because it was lack of leadership at that point, so.
Be that as it may, I would make the motion that.
Considering, considering where we're at right now, it's kind of a viewpoint, we're in the red, New York's in the red right now, really, I understand going forward, let's see what she does going forward, she, she might make changes where allows certain areas, as they go down, to actually regulate what they.
Maybe she will, maybe she won't.
But at this time right now, we're in the red, so it's kind of like a viewpoint right now, it's like, I just don't see the why we need to go in that direction right now, even if we did, you know, I, I totally believe that the department of health is the ones that's gotta guide us through this.
Which one, state or local?
Both. I mean, I'm not an expert, just like you said, I'm not an expert, I don't think any of us are experts, and to judge what we think is the best for the community, and we have no background in this, is kind of a, I would say we work with putting ourselves out there, if you ask me.
I mean, the superintents reached out to county health, because there was no leadership coming down from the state, and then, now there's leadership coming down from the state, where just this stuff comes, I mean, do you want to take over from state ed? And make decisions without the guidance of state ed, with their mandates and, and policies and everything? Yeah, and then when you have, what you have then, is you have a school district that's not. No, this, your definition of free is a lot different than what actually a free district can, can do, yours is, your political views and obviously, background is considered free, so not really what free is, so, I think our.
Those are strong, I understand. I don't like to be told what to do, I don't think any of them, but unfortunately, we're. The system's not meant to do what he's asking. The system is meant. The state, executive orders, NISBA, kind of mandate to us, even though we don't like. And, and Dan said it, we're not really qualified to do it, but it is near and dear to Jason's heart, and I understand that. But I think, you know, I don't know what to do anymore.
I was just going to say, with a student standpoint, I would love like by the end of this year to be able to go to school and out mask and stuff like that. And I know at this point, it's like, never say it as a divide zone. And in order to get back to the type where it's the blue zone or even to the orange zone, it's something that we have to work at the flex to hold to get to that point. So the state mandate of all of us going mask, that's, I don't think we should change that at that point because we're just getting back to the school. We're just being able to go back to our day to day, so if we were to change anything, there's no way. It's not for, it's that's.
And, and Jay, I get, I get where you're coming from in the sense that, you know, obviously what you're asking is not to say, go change this right now. It's to say, hey, we want local control of whatever, you know, mask mandates, education reform, whatever. The, the piece where that is, again, is this is why we have NISBA, that's the representative of us, that takes, that takes our legislative issues, whether for the governor or not, and brings them to there. And it is better, if you want to think about this, to put it as a legislative piece for their agenda for, for the workshop we're going to, that says, hey, this district says they want local control, they want to be, stop having this top down thing from the governor telling departments to mandate things. And they said, okay, what other districts are on board with this? Then they get the other districts, now instead of it's just Niagara Wheatfield saying this, you have the power of Wheatfield, area one districts, area two districts, all the way to area 11, all saying the same thing in our, through our legislative agenda that is pushed through then and lobbied to the state. I think that is the avenue for this, instead of us saying as an individual board that's going rogue against, you know, that it's going to be interpreted as going rogue against the governor and, and the, the oath of office that we take to say, yeah, we're going to just do this. When we were against test, state testing, and we were against the governor doing the APR that way, we had made proclamations to say to NISBA, please put this on your agenda as an item to lobby the state and, and the assembly for, saying that we want local control of our APR, of our teacher evaluations. We don't want to do the state tested every year. And we saw where that went because of, you know, other political things. But that was the avenue for that, because remember, we are, as we went through that workshop that we did, or our, our, our board training, we are, unlike where you are on the town board, where you are a legislative piece of that town, we are not a legislative piece of the district. We are a board of trustees. Our job is to employ the superintendent and make sure the district is complying and following policies set by state ed, state health department, and any other governmental agency that dictates those policies to us. And so, I mean, that's what our piece is right here, and we may not like the fact that we are dictating those things, but again, our, our role here is to make sure that they are being followed by our superintendent, who in turn makes sure that all his employees are following us.
Yeah, and at no point did I say fully disregard them, I'm saying, let's just make known that our displeasure with the way things came down rather than having a local avenue of decision making. Be allowed to get followed through rather than just be squashed. From states even like, you know, last minute, I'm going to kick it in the can, you know, ever since summer school discussions, oh, just wait, I'll get that. And, you know, making plans in that direction, then all of a sudden, boom. I think it was a hasty decision on her part and for us as a board to, to advocate, to bring back local decisions, like I, I don't see how, how it hurt. Obviously, raised displeasure with anyone, right? But at, at no point did I say, well, we're just not to go along with what she said or. So please don't misunderstand me with a basket.
We just talked about local control, and one of the things that kind of supports what you're saying is what Dan indicated. New York City is in the, in the low end of the, the color zone, and they're being mandated. And yet, question is, do you need it? You know, there's a lot of negatives that's been happening to all the students in this country for the last year. No one knows what's true, what's not, because you hear it, no matter what channel you watch. I don't know if masks work, okay? I know students who've been committing suicide higher rates, taking drugs at a higher rate. Is it because of virtual learning? Is it because of mask wearing? You know, personally, I think they think, these spray bottles. My wife was at the doctor today, she goes, I have not had a case in one year of approval. Today, he goes, and I don't think it's the mask, because I think everyone's washing their hands and using spray bottles. But we're not doctors, I don't know what it is. So I take a bath.
Well, and going by that logic, though, where, what's New York City doing differently than us to be in there? I mean, if you want to talk about going with mandated things, what's the mandate that they have that we don't? Do you have to have a vaccine to go into restaurants, into large group events, and, and anything else like that? So, I mean, you know, yeah, they have the mask piece, but you know, be careful what you, you know, what you wish for when it comes to wanting to curb the, the spread, if you want to say. So, as I say, if you are going to make that motion, you need to come up and do business. So, yeah.
And that would go to what you guys to NISBA?
Well, the way it needs to be is that, that we direct the board clerk to send a letter from our board to NISBA to ask that to be put onto legislative agenda as an item for discussion at NISBA. No, because that's exactly what we do with NISBA, when we are not happy with something in the state with that. The other thing that you can do is to, if you want to write a proclamation to present to the board, you know, that we would be against that and want to do it, that's the other way of doing it, where it's not a, it's not an actionable item with a motion, it's, it's an acceptance of a proclamation stating that, you know, whereas the board of education had worked to, with, in the superintendents, worked with the department of, local department of health to come up with a appropriate and well thought out plan for curbing the spread of COVID-19. And whereas, you know, we, we, we have board members who are, who desire, or not desire, but believe that local control is the best for our local area and so on, then you would go on and say, you know, let it, let it be proclaimed that our board would, is seeking that we have local control returned to, you know, the board of education. And I, I don't have that language with me for the proclamation, if you're guessing right now, but that's basically how it goes. It's like, it's, we used to write them periodically to things, but you know, if you want to sit, then I could help you through that piece.
Yeah, I was going to say, get together and hammer something up.
But, I mean, off the top of my head, I don't have all the exact wording in each of the paragraphs, and it's like five paragraphs you need to have in it. Whereas, things like that, so. You know. But again, you know, I think the best avenue with the NISBA conference coming up is to get it on their agenda to have discussed and back to the pond there.
We're all the.
Yeah, well. And the reason I say it is that we're a little old Niagara Wheatfield over here. When you have one thing come from us that's not with the weight of all of the boards from this across the state on, is it good look at there? You know, when it comes to NISBA and say, hey, we're going to make the, you know, it, with all our members that go across the state, with the media that goes to that particular part of the, the convention, it's, it's amazing how that piece gets people moving.
Maybe we can spearhead it.
It's all up to you. I'll just help you write it. Okay, going back to this piece, though, and.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Leading on to finance, the long range financial analysis. Allison, do you want to talk about those particular things on there, or Dan?
I, let me get it, give me one second.
And I will reiterate, it is freezing in here.
Oh, oh, as far as a report to the board, this is from, so, as, as a board of education, we had the opportunity to spend some time with Dr. Rick Tims. Dr. Tim has walked through our long range plan. You got an opportunity to hear in great detail the work that both the business office and our financial consultant, which is, which is Rick Tims and his office staff, do to keep a really good chartered course for the district financial. And we, we are, we do plan to bring him back for a board meeting, but we did have an opportunity at the board of education retreat to spend some extra time with him, and I thought that was a really good thing, there were a lot of good questions that could be asked. You could get into some additional, you know, questions that maybe during a board meeting, you don't necessarily feel like get the time for. So I thought that was really good, thank you for sending that up.
Any questions on either of those documents that's been shared with us? All right, if not, old business, well, actually, items for board, is there anything for board discussion? He says, I know you're going to bring up a new business, so we won't discuss that here, anything else? All right, old business, one of the items is the NISBA representative from region one. There are two candidates that we had both nominated, both of them, one is Linda Hoffman, who you have her, if you kept it from when we nominated her, you have her resume. And then the other person is Matt Kennedy, who is the president of the North Tonawanda School Board, who is, decided, you know, Linda has done a lot for NISBA and has been around there for a long time, but she's, this is for 34th year, I believe, in serving on that role, and I know Matt's trying to bring some youth to the, the little youth movement with that. So we have to vote on one of those, too. Just one, we can only pick one of the two, because we can only have one representative from the region. So thoughts, because we have to vote as a collective board to, for which candidate? Linda Hoffman has been there for, well, forever. It's like 34 years, yeah. And then Matt is trying to, is, is interested in unseating her and being, you know, being a, more of a youth perspective to that role.
Stephen, the way things, I mean, I don't know the way they handle business is having that much seniority?
No, you, you know, so what the, the reps meet every other month and with amongst themselves and discuss issues. And then each month they've come out, there's a report that comes out from region one, you probably get the email from Linda periodically that she just sends out, that gives you some highlights of things. And it's, a lot of times it's a, it's a summary of that, what comes from the executive director of NISBA, but more focused for your region, for your area. You know, one of Matt's things that he had, he had stated when, when talking to me and asking us for nomination is the fact that Linda's from Erie Two Voces and represents a lot of the smaller districts down there and has a smaller scope with that piece. And Matt coming from the larger districts up north, you know, might bring a different perspective that would benefit the larger districts. They're there, not to take anything away, I mean, I've met Linda numerous times, obviously going to NISBA, and she's been very friendly and, and everything, and you know, she answers questions. So, you know, I guess basically, are you, we want to look at, you know, youth movement or going with the, with Linda who's been there for quite some time? Kennedy.
Well, no. Are, are you been happy with?
So, here's the funny piece, I might say this enough to sound like. The, the role is, there, there's nothing really that they do that is a role that's like ours, where it's, you know, her power lies when she serves on the Erie Two board. His is not when he's with the board as North Tonawanda. All this is basically is information gathering, and you, you, when you go to your, to the NISBA workshop or NISBA events, and there, you have people from your area coming there, she's like the meter and greeter, the person who, you know, welcomes you and stuff. And I, I, all I can say is that in the past couple of NISBA ones, she's not been there doing the welcoming piece. Because, you know, Rick would know how it is, because he knows everyone. When you know everyone, you've been around a long time, you start talking to people and you sort of may forget to welcome people and stuff. So, I mean, that's, that is the one thing that's been noticed by people coming to NISBA, because, I mean, I'll, I'll give you an example. You went to NISBA at New York, New York City, you went to NISBA, did you ever, do you know who she is?
No.
All right, I'll tell you, when we went to NISBA at Buffalo, when she, when she was here, she welcomed every single one with. Yeah, and she was like, oh, it's my people from region one, in area one. So, you know, it's, that's, that's one thing that Matt in, in his letter out to the, to districts had put, you know, that he's looking to bring that fresh blood, we can start being there for, for everyone again, but I laugh because it's like, well, that's the only thing that we really do where people see you and whatnot. The only thing I can say is that Matt's local, he's our neighboring district, you know, it would be nice to sort of show support, support for a candidate from a neighboring district. You know.
I guess I would say she seems like she's had a good run, and it's always nice when somebody steps up and wants to add a different perspective to something. So I think I would probably vote for Matt.
And, and not to take away anything from, they're both nice people, they're both great people.
That's what I'm saying, we can we vote for two, if we can.
You can, it's only one, one rep. From Erie Two Voces. So was it, I think Springs, Springville that she served on, and then went to Erie Two, and I mean, she's been for 30 some odd, 30 some odd years on school boards. Yeah.
You know, I mean, he's, he's local, and you don't understand what we're going here.
John, what do you think?
No, I'm just listening, and I think we bring it to have a local connection, because last time I know it's, it's local for that. As far as information regarding this. To have the resource in the backyard versus very cheap. Southern County where concentration is a little bit smaller, I find this is. Somebody wants to step up and.
What?
I'll do whatever the pleasure for. I just hate when someone's been around for 30 years and no reason to to make a move, other than saying maybe you should start bringing more people at the door. I, I just.
I'm saying.
You know, and sometimes, there's sometimes, it becomes so much love to do something so long. And I give a little sentimental note, when someone wants to do that, and is willing to do that, and some people have to believe the longer you stay active, the longer you live, and I'm one that believes that. But I'm not going to fight.
Well, this is not a fightable, I mean, this is just us talking and seeing which direction to go. I mean, I, I mean, I know Linda from my, this is my 11th year on the board, I've met her many times at, at those, at the functions. You know, and Matt, I, I work with him with the, with the board president in there. So they're both great people, it doesn't matter to me how it is, you know, I think if there's, if there's a delineating piece, we have a neighboring board president who's running, and it's, it would be nice to support our neighboring, you know, when we're neighboring board presidents, so. But it's up, it's up to you. So, John, what do you want, what would you say, because we'll, we'll just basically, most, most number of names we go, we'll go with. Don't matter, Linda.
I'll do a secret ballot.
I don't think, yeah. No, we don't need a motion or anything, because it's, it's, well, no, because we're casting a vote, because what we're doing is we're directing, the motion will be to direct Maureen to cast a vote for our board as the district clerk. So we just need to know the name to put into the motion.
No, you just need to say the name.
You say the name and then we'll make them, we'll vote, and we'll direct, we'll make a motion to direct Maureen to cast a vote for, for Linda Hoffman. Okay?
Congratulations, Linda Hoffman.
Okay, I would go with Matt Kennedy. Okay, and then I'd start the call for motion to direct the clerk of the board to cast the board's vote from Niagara Wheatfield School District for Matt Kennedy. For the, um, the position of area one representative. All right, it's, I'll make the second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, post abstaining, motion carries. Maureen, whenever that's, I know it's due by the 30th, so whenever, you know, and I know I'll probably have to attach that board, be on the board actually, you know, piece on it, so. Okay, um, new business. Actually, is there any other old business that I, before I move on? All right, new business, um. I'd like to call for motion, um, to accept the resignation of Jordan Schmidt, effective nine to 21.
I'll make the motion.
It's been moved in seconded. All those in the favor, please say aye. Aye, post abstaining, motion carries. I'd like to call, a, a call for motion to accept the recommendation from the superintendent of schools to appoint Mr. James Spanbauer as the interim principal of Edwardtown Middle School, effective nine to 21, per terms in, in agreement of the, uh, I'm sorry, the, the terms of the employment agreement. Can't read your writing. There, uh, there's a motion for that. It's moved in seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, post abstaining, motion carries. All right, any other new business? Well, why don't we, for new business, we have to come up with a proclamation so we can put that on the next board piece, because you wanna.
Yeah, we can do that.
All right. Well, we'll just work on it and then, yeah. So we'll do that. All right, and then, um, any other new business? You need to get going. You need to get going?
Yeah, I need to get.
All right. All right, any public comments from anyone in, in tents? All right, board member comments? Yeah, I just wanna thank, uh, the buildings and grounds. The district looks great for the opening. Um, you know, I haven't been to the building, it's just time wise and everything like that, but I mean, the outside is fantastic. So kudos to, uh, to our staff for that. And also, uh, you know, hey, I, it's, it's reopening time, so, you know, um, for our teachers and staff there, you know, thank you for coming back and being, uh, being ready for our kids coming, uh, starting next week. So it's, uh, there's a lot to get ready for again, and uh, it's, it's a pleasure to have everyone back.
Wish everyone a good healthy school year.
All right, any, any other comments?
Yeah, just wanted to, uh, congratulate our members of the district here. All the members that received candy this evening. I understand we're gonna see them next month or next year. I want to congratulate them. Good luck to all the students and staff. Have a safe year. Kid athletics back rolling again and all the after school activities and all the things that make the whole school year robust homecoming. Everyone needs to work together and hopefully get to the end of this thing.
All right, I call for motion to adjourn. I'll second it. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, post abstaining, we're adjourned. And we're frozen. It is freezing in here.